Calling to order, our budget work session number four. Today is February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're ready to, we're right in the midst of our budget season. So with that, Ms. Hastings, if you call our attendance.
Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Cotton?
Here.
Mr. Crowdo?
Here.
Ms. Higgins?
Here.
Mr. Richards?
Here.
Mr. Weinberg?
Here.
Ms. Walsh?
Here.
Ms. Meacher?
Here.
And I am here, so we are all here, full house.
Very good. And so with that, I will pass it on to the superintendent.
It's great to be back doing our budget, but I'm gonna just pass the baton very quickly over to our director, our assistant superintendent for student services, John Ferresio, to go over all the student service budget items. So it's all yours, John.
Thank you. We're gonna start with Jack Dunn tonight. He's going to lead us into the presentation, and then I'll jump in at my part.
So the copy of the presentation is in your folder. I don't know if they got it posted online. This was one of the few that we had done early enough that we had asked Karen to post it, but I don't know if it made it before we came down, before she left. So we'll do a, I'll quickly talk about that state adequacy thing again, because I went into it the other night, so I'll just briefly touch upon it. But we'll do an overview of the budget, what expenses and revenue associated with student services, the personnel requests that were in there this year, and then student services, the ESAR, we do not have that slide, I should have blocked that out, sorry, but we can talk to it if you want. And then background, some student services data, and then some student services, the contracted services, so work session schedule, and then public information. So as I mentioned at the end of the last meeting, when people were probably a little wiped out, this was the slide that was originally presented on work session one. We just added little pluses and minuses all the way to the left and highlighted what adds up and minus is what to equal what. So that was the purpose of this slide, same one, just kind of showing you, as you take each of the components and add them together, what they equal to come up with adequacy, as well as the statewide education tax. And then what we did is, when the governor's budget came out, we took that and interpreted based on news articles that if the average district got an extra, I think it was nine hundred and sixty-six bucks or something, and five hundred and some dollars for free and reduced, how that would impact your budget if all that, if that money had come to fruition. We understand that it's just the governor's initial budget, and we interpreted that just to give you an idea. That was our only purpose here, okay? So overview of the student services budget, this is by object, this shows you where the salaries and benefits, as well as the professional services. If you remember from the transfers in the opening slide, I mentioned two hundred and fifty thousand from the instructional trust, that's where it's going, into those professional services to help mitigate unanticipated expenses, especially as it relates to out-of-district placements and nursing services. Other than that, the rest of the budget is fairly flat. On the revenue side, there's a couple different pieces of revenue that come in as it relates to student services. You have tuition for Project Search, which is the program that runs out of the, of the hospital. Then you have regular day tuition for the pre-K program. Then you have tuition from, this is from the accounting manual, this is the money that comes for special ed students that we bill Deerfield for, because that gets billed in addition to what they pay just for the student. So the regular ed tuition is the next line, that is what we expect to come in from Deerfield next year. And then the special education aid are the expenses that we submit to the state to determine eligibility and reimbursement for purposes of special ed, and then the Medicaid distribution for students who have Medicaid numbers and which we can bill for services. So that brings in the revenue for student services. The personnel requests, these were presented to you the first night, we've teased out just the ones that were related to this budget. As we mentioned, the floater nurse eliminated that and then rolled into an ARPN nurse who does our Medicaid billing and IEP oversight and does some substituting. So the net increase there is about sixty thousand. The district OT was an ESAR, this year we're proposing to put that into the district budget. And then the family literacy facilitator, bringing them from a point eight six to a one point oh, and then adding a preschool teacher at Abbott Downing to add a preschool program at Abbott Downing. And you'll see a little bit more information about that as John gets into his presentation. So I'm gonna turn it over to John, he'll start giving you some background.
Okay. Before I jump in here, very simply, I want to just explain student services is kind of, what is student services? And sometimes we use that as a synonym with special education, and it's very different than that. It has to do with many services the district has. It starts from our Title I services, to our English language learner services, to our counseling services, our nursing services, services for homeless educated students, services for, of course, our students on IEPs, and has to dip into actually after-school programming and a lot of our summer programming. So it's a pretty vast amount of services, and then of course 504, not to mention that too. So it has to do with a lot of need for students. And when we get into the world of special ed, it's important that I start with this background, because it's kind of something that I've, you know, spent a long time working with and doing, and it's really about two major components that the law that was written back in nineteen seventy-five leads us to. And the first one's free, FAPE, which is Free and Appropriate Public Education. And what that does, it sets a standard for us that says, we need to educate students at public expense, it has to be appropriate to meet their needs, it has to be in the school with their peers, and it has to include special education services as much as we can, and related services and therapies and counseling, and all those things, and transportation. It says, the law says, we need to provide these for our students who have identified needs. And then least restricted environment is sometimes one that I explain often, because we have a mandate to educate our students as close to the regular classroom and as close to their homeschool as we can. And I think that's a, that's an important thing to keep in mind as we go through. Yes, sometimes we can say, is there a cost savings to do things differently? Yeah, you can, but the law doesn't allow you to do it. The law says that we need to continually push towards the regular ed classroom with students with disabilities, and we have to try to include them, and it has to be geographically as close as we can to their home, their home, in where they are. So only when they've been unsuccessful, and this is the hard thing, we can, we want to be as preventive we can, but when we get into the world of special ed, it's based on a student not having success. And that's sometimes a hard thing to understand, like, well, you could have prevented this. Well, we could have, but the law says we have to show in the law that there was a lack of success before we move to that next continuum of services, which may be into a resource room, into a self-contained room, then to an out-of-district placement. But at each level, we have to show the child was not successful there. And that's sometimes a hard thing to do, because it takes time, and it takes, sometimes finances for that to happen. But it's important that we start there and talk about that.
Well, and it takes long-term failure on the part of the child, which is always the best for the child.
Right, right. But the law tells us we have to go there.
Chinga ching.
So sometimes, again, when we talk about special ed, it's often our IP team has a lot of, lot of power. And they do, because that's the beauty of the process. It's families, it's educators getting together at table and talking about the best needs for students. And I've heard it over the years of being in a role like, similar to this, that, that, well, they can just spend money at that, at that team meeting, and what's to stop them from doing that, and adding services and doing that? Well, I thought about this, because some of the feedback I got, and I said, so what are some of those systematic physical coordination that we do for, for students? And we've brought a lot of these over the, you know, the time I've been here, to the teams. And I meet three times a month with all of the special ed managers across the district, all the assistant principals and directors and coordinators, we meet together and we talk about a lot of things. So one of the first things that we did, and I talked about this when we did the special ed review, was I brought forward consistent deliberation forms. And that means every time we, we identify a child now in Concord, no matter if it's Krista McCullough for her Beaverton Meadow or at the high school, we're using the same process, the same form, the same deliberation. So we have consistency. So what it does is make us very accurate about our identification. We're using the same evaluations, we're using the same process, and the same conversations happening in those meetings. One, that's real comfortable for a parent as they grow through the system, and two, it keeps us accurate on our, on our identifications. So that's in place. This is all part of a whole special ed manual, online manual, that you've seen a few times, I talked about it in, in Superintendent Murphy's report that we put together. We have an online manual that's available to all of our special educators in the district that has all of these forms in it, all these processes and protocols, to stay consistent in our process. That way, we know we're regulated on what we're allowing to happen in doing that. There's a request form, anytime we go outside an item that may have been put forth or budgeted, so anytime there's a special request or a change in a child's program, something happens where we need to add a service. There's a form that each one of our buildings has to fill out and comes to me for, for direct approval. And I usually talk to Jack and say, I have a request for this, what do you think? Where, where can we look at money for this? What can I talk about it? I talked to Ellen about grants for something like that. But it's all done systematically, so everyone's on the same page, and we know those expenditures that they go through. Transportation, anytime a child's added to transportation, we have a form for that. They have to come through, it has to be approved by me, goes on to Terry Karate, approved by him, before we issue transportation. So there's some regulation in that. We have an EA, educational assistant EA, Independence Deliberation Form. So when a parent and a, and a team gets together and says, I think this child may, may need more support, may need a one-on-one support. We have a deliberation form that walks through, looks at criteria of independence for that child. What can they do by themselves, what do they need support and help with? And it's a way for us to look at, what's the right amount of support to give to a child, so it's not too much, but maybe not too little for them to be successful. And that's in place, again, throughout our buildings, and we're trying to be very consistent about when we add services. Again, I meet with the managers weekly to talk to them. We have monthly office meetings amongst all of the coordinators in, in our district upstairs, that, that includes the, the homeless coordinator, out-of-district coordinator, Dawn Celia, our systems coordinator, Molly, who was our finance person, and Janine Richards, our director of student staff wellness, Laura Anderson, our nurse care coordinator. We meet monthly, and we all talk about kind of where are we, what's going on in our areas, expenditures as part of all of our things, we continually talk and meet about these things. Grant monthly meetings, look for attorney funding sources. Ellen and I speak daily, sometimes seven times a day, but at least meet monthly, and we go through all of our grants together to make sure that we are expending, our expenditures are there, our maintenance of effort is there, and we're very on task there. School visitation and team meetings, I go to schools a lot, and that's a goal of mine is to get out and be with them, and be in there, and watch what's going in, and observe some of the programs, and go to meetings with parents who sometimes request it, to try to be part of that. Our out protocols, as we call them, out-of-district protocols, foster care protocols, protocols for someone at a parochial school who may request testing or assessment, we have protocols for all of that. What happens if you're contacted? Who do you contact next? What's the process for that to happen next? We've put all those in place over the last year to really make sure that we're clear on that. Same with Medicaid, we just finished a lot of training on Medicaid. We brought in a company to train all of our teachers, and Molly Lannan is our person in finance, she goes out and trains all of our teaching assistants to make sure we're procuring as much back to the district as we can that is legally allowable under Medicaid, and we do that continually, daily. And then I meet monthly with OT speech and school psychologists, just to make sure that they're all doing all right, caseloads are good, things are going well, what services they may need, and do some future planning with them. So it's kind of a lot, but that's kind of, I wanted to present this to say, there's a lot in place to try to keep this in a, a, a physical, I guess, box, if we can, as much as we can, because it can get, it's expensive, special education, and we're trying to do our best to control the costs.
Quick question.
Sure.
If we could just go back a couple of slides to, to the original with the, yes, how does the Education for All Handicapped Children Act differ from IDEA?
That is.
Oh, it is the same, okay, thank you.
Yep, that is, thank you. It was reauthorized in two thousand and four also.
Thank you.
Yep. So by the numbers, this is hard to look at, I, I, I know, but if you live in my world, you live in data. And what this, I did this for trends to show you that Concord has done a nice job over the years, really looking at identifying, this has not increased much as you look at it. And with all the things, think about all the mental health in the world, and all the things we're facing right now and are going on, and if you look at our trends in our numbers right now, they're still pretty consistent over the years. There, you're not seeing a huge spike or a huge uh-oh in this. It's saying that, you know, as our numbers decline in some places, the percentage is staying the same. So it's just a picture to paint that when you look at even sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, it's pretty spot on, our numbers, they're not fluctuating that much. Let's take a second and questions, yes?
Thank you, I had a chance to look at this just a few moments ago, and I'm noticing a considerable drop off from elementary to middle school in numbers of students receiving IEPs, and then it goes back up again in high school. So if I look at even twenty twenty-one for elementary students, it looks like it's two eighty-four, but then I go to Runlet in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and we're at one forty-nine.
It's only three grades.
It's only three grades.
High school's four grades.
Okay, that makes sense.
Elementary school's like five grades.
And then it goes back up to in the two hun, another hundred though, and adding one more grade in the high school?
Yep, and you're also adding in some Deer, yeah, adding in students from Deerfield.
Adding other students, okay, that explains it.
Yep.
Thank you.
And you double, you know, there's eight hundred kids at Runlet, and there's eight hundred youngsters at Runlet and fourteen hundred at Concord, so you're gonna see an increase.
No, that makes sense.
So, and that's when you look at the percentages, like by, and you see the percentages look pretty even there, and they are staying pretty consistently. We're not spiking and valley that much, it's not a huge increase over years, that's a good, that's a good piece of data, when you look at that and say, okay, so it tells me that we're being consistent with our teams in identifying students.
So John, that's part of the, part of the story. Degree of need, has that changed over the years?
Yes.
Because that's the other part of the story.
That is part of the story, and we're gonna get to, start talking about some of those needs.
Oh, you are, okay. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't read ahead, honestly.
No, no, it's okay, no, but that's a great, it's a great, and that's, that's a very good one. And, and, and what you're gonna see too is younger need, and when I get to preschool, my reason for the preschool request down the road, we're gonna talk about younger need, and you're gonna see what the numbers tell you that as we move on through these charts.
Quick question as well.
Yep.
I, so the numbers, oh, if we could go back one.
Yep.
Sorry about that. In twenty, the percentage of all special ed, I'm looking at twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, doesn't add up to a hundred percent, is that just a calculating error, or are there numbers missing? It adds up to ninety-eight, I think.
It's probably rounding up and rounding down.
Rounding, yeah.
Okay.
Just rounding, yeah.
We just need more decimal points. Please, we need some more numbers.
So, next thing to talk about here is, so you wanted to go back one slide real quick, I just wanna, I wanna show the overall numbers, so. Yep. So you'll see our overall, our overall percentage is around seventeen percent, and if you look back, it really has stayed, it's stayed consistent over the last three years, which is good to see, in doing that. We're evaluating, and you're gonna see it in the future too, a lot of students, a lot of students are referred, we're evaluating, but that number is saying that we truly are identifying the students who have this need, who qualify, and we're being very consistent about that. And that's what I wanted to point out in this slide, and it shows that, you know, six forty-five is where we're sitting right now. So out of district, this isn't, you know, I'd like to be real proud of this and own this, but I came into the game a little bit late, but this is, says that Concord has done a lot of work to include their students and try to keep them home and follow that thing of free and appropriate education in LRE. They've done it because if you look at placed by teams in Concord, there's only thirteen out of almost four thousand students, that's a pretty good number, I think, to look at and say, wow, on that. Are they really expensive, some of these placements? Yes. But we're, we're also facing, you're in Concord, and you have a lot of kids in the court system, you have foster kid, you have foster students, that's because of who we are and the services we offer outside of schools and inside of schools for families. You're gonna have that, and you're gonna see that number.
Is the thirteen a subset of some of the other numbers, or are they?
No, there is fi, those are the students that are placed by teams right now, by like, we decided it was time for a placement.
In and edu, and out of district?
Yep, yep, they have had, they, they had a real hard time in our schools, and we have decided ourselves it was time to place.
So then what's the difference between thirty-five and that two?
So you, so two of them are, are, are residential placed, all right, and that's what's saying. So we have thirty-five in day placements in the district, right now, current thirty-five.
Does that doesn't include the thirteen?
Nope.
Okay.
So that, that will add up to the thirteen, so it's thirty-five are the total, all right, in day placements. There's two total in, in, in residential placements, but of that, that's made up by thirteen day placements that the district did, nine by the courts.
That was my question, if they added up to the thirty-five.
Yeah, keeping your toes, I did this chart backwards, sorry. Eleven, eleven by foster placements, so that's kind of where that, where that, that does. And you'll see that, you know, it's kind of where we are for, for our placements, it's just, it's what it is. Some of those, we, we, when it comes to court and foster, we don't have, we have to just facilitate it. But there's mean, there's means in place, you know, for, for that under, they call it section four oh two, which they talk about, so we pay up to, we pay a part of, a portion of what we would pay for a normal, for a normal special ed child, and then beyond that, the state picks up those funds for, for a kid that was court placed. And then fosters, similar, there's a similar cost to fosters.
And those are special education foster children who are in day placement programs or in other districts?
In day placement programs. These are just, this is just out of district schools, right there. Just to give you an idea about, okay, so what does that cost? I, I know that, you know, listening the other night, I was trying to give you some, some numbers to this too. And, you know, an in-state educational day placement, you're talking, you know, five, about fifty-six thousand dollars, that's the minimum, averages around eighty-six, and then maximum we pay would be a hundred and sixteen for a day placement. And then, then out of state, as you see, increases immensely, as you say, and then residential placements in state is where we are. Those are usually the costs that we're looking at.
Annual?
Annual.
John, just a, a quick question. Out of state day placement, we're, we're placing kids in Massachusetts or someplace?
We have, we haven't.
On a day basis?
The court does, and foster sometimes does. Yep, yep, that's what happens.
A lot of commuting.
That is. That is, and buses are running sometimes up to $600 a day right now for us, so.
Some of the transportation is not so different than the tuition.
Right, right, that's what we're facing right now. And that's because, quite frankly, there's a, there's a lack of programs right now for this population.
I understand the reason.
And, and it's, it's, it's hard to see. We have, we have placements all the way in, in, up in, up in Maine for kids that are sometimes to the courts right now. We're seeing things that down, down in Southern Mass, they're, they're reaching far to try to find placements for these students, keep them, keep them safe and keep them in a good place, therapeutic place.
These numbers are per student?
Correct.
Are the costs of transportation included in these as well, for like the day?
This is the tuition.
This is the tuition.
And a question about, is the state providing adequacy for the, these students who are placed out of district or at charters receiving special education services? Do we get this, do we get a differentiated aid for?
So what happens is, we have a cap. And so it's called, that's, that's our, one of the slides that, you know, Jack put up, the first thing he put up was about, we get back special ed aid, and that's what it is. It used to be called catastrophic aid, they've changed it to special ed aid now. And what it means is, it's around $60,000 is, is what the cap is, so around. I say around because, don't ask me to guess that, what they'll do this year, it's every, it fluctuates.
It's curated a lot, yeah.
Yeah, so it's around, my best guess is, it's around, is the best way to say, around $60,000. We pay the first 60, we have to keep very good records on this. So we, we make sure that we are keeping good records around Medicaid, good records around busing, things like this. And then we can submit into the state aid system to get money back to us. So we get basically back anything over $60,000 if we've done it correctly.
So just to piggyback off of that line of questioning, is the, you're giving us these costs per student, are we capped at paying 60,000, or do we eat all of this?
We pay up to 60, and then after 60, they reimburse us.
Okay.
But, there's no guarantee on that. So from a budgetary point of view, I can't say I'm definitely getting that back, because I, it fluctuates. So that's kind of what we run into sometimes. So just to be aware that, that's hard, because if I'm, if I'm spending $230,000 and I have to budget that, but I might only have to pay 60, it's kind of a hard, hard thing to realize. But that's the reality of catastrophic aid. It's not guaranteed right now when I sit here and I'm doing my budget for next year. I have to budget for what I need for the child.
And this might be more of a, Jeff, are these students included in our student count for adequacy?
I don't know, I'm writing that down.
Okay.
I don't know, off the top of my head.
Question.
I would think they would.
I would think they would be.
I would think they would, but, yeah, it'd be a, a desk and a, to confirm.
So another, another section of kind of, that, that's kind of a number that has been a population that, that I think we have to continue to serve and look at our services. And I'm doing, I'm in the midst of a review right now with this, I'm working with a, I put that in the weekly report too, where I'm working with a company called Upriver, and we've put together an administrative team to look at our ELL services across the district. And you'll see again, our numbers are staying fairly consistent. You know, they're fluctuating a little bit, they're staying pretty fairly consistent about where we are with our needs for students. We're looking at about 313 students who receive these services right now, for ELL services.
Do our elementary, Runlet and high school staffs for ELL get to work together so that when the students go to Runlet, they know what kind of programs they've used in elementary? And when they go to the high school, they, they're aware of what they did in?
So one of the things, it's a great question. And why, why it's a great question is because I've asked the same question. And I think that that's why I'm doing that review, as I, I've talked about with Upriver right now. I've hired a consultant, Dana Garish-French, and she's working with a company called Upriver. And there, we've now met with every building, and we're doing a needs assessment with every building right now to talk about that. We're getting together and we've bought some software called Elevations. It's E-L-Lations, it's kind of the way it's, it's spelled. And that's allowing us to have consistent data across the district. It's something we haven't had before, that's recent. We have training coming on, up on that, on the March 17 date. I'm getting the whole team together across the district, and we're working together and doing that. So, that's in process right now of kind of a whole review to look at that. I will be before the new coming forward with, to the instructional committee, an entire report on kind of what we think in our future. And then like I, like I've done with special education, I'll lay out a three to five year plan about kind of, here's some things we need to be up, first of all, up to standard, and then second of all, moving forward and progressing where we are.
And a follow up on that, is there one person that sort of oversees the ELL program for all you, the two?
Me.
So it's just another one who has full time jobs?
Yes.
Mr. Ferb?
Yes.
There, for some of these years, until recently, there was a pause in refugee resettlement, unfortunately. Do we expect these numbers to start increasing again? Do we have a sense?
So, what's?
What is happening and if the population being resettled is changing?
So.
Need to change?
We have a wonderful person, Kathy Ketchell, who works for Eccentria. And she's the one that connects and brings these families to us, and she, she, she's at the middle school every day. So I touch base with her monthly, probably say, what are you hearing? And what's happening is, we are right now in a housing standstill right now. There, she, she used to just do Concord, that was her job. Now she has this amazing vast catchment area to try to find placement. There's no housing. So the families are still coming, they're just not coming to Concord right now. So if something changed and we had housing, that may change. So right now, we're kind of landlocked on them, on finding suitable housing there. We're having students though, that's, students come into our school through some of the churches. They're coming through, they're coming through, through community groups. They're coming through some of our homeless population, unfortunately, coming through, first time Americans. And some are just moving to Concord. So we're seeing a steady influence, but it, it's consistent. So as we graduate, they're coming, we're having new families come in. So it, it's pretty amazing how steady that number has, has stayed, I thought, when I looked at that and said, wow. It increased, but then it's, it's staying pretty steady. So, homeless, I touched upon this, another thing. Stacy Lazard, we've able, we were able to hire through a grant to help coordinate some of our homeless efforts across the district, and we have an identified liaison in each building. So, we've done a lot. This number, it's 100, and every day it's, we're identifying. And I think that we've got better about identifying the right students. She's done training, and we're, we're learning about families that are experiencing homelessness. We're about 100 students right now, as you see on that.
John, I'm just trying to understand what the deemed homeless percentage is. It, it's the same number as the actual number of kids, and it doesn't seem to, I, I just don't understand what's going on in that column.
I think you have an error, I think, I have an error there. Very good catch right there, I just think it might have just totaled up right there for some reason, and I'm not sure why. When I was doing my calculation.
But, but, but the bottom line is, is we've got 100 kids out of 38, 67, which is 3% of our population.
Right, that should have.
Out of 100.
Out of 100.
At Abbott Downing, 12% of our district wide.
Oh, I see what you're saying, so it does make sense.
12 kids, 12%.
Yeah, okay.
But you just got lucky there, because it was 100.
They are basically 100.
Yeah, it's because, because it's happened to have 100 kids.
I'm looking at going like, why did I put 100 there, and I was like, I had to think about that twice. All right, yes.
It's been a long day.
So, John, you didn't show us a multi-year chart of this?
No, I did not.
Is that number doubling at that time, it's holding steady at that time?
Uh, it's increased a lot, it's, it's, it's higher. I, I don't, again, I don't have as much data on this that I feel is accurate. I know this is accurate because of what we put in place over the last year.
Can I make a comment on that, because we did talk a lot about that last year? In that we probably were running around 80 last year. We saw an increase as the year went on, up to over 100 last year. Of course, numbers also change and vary as it, as the seasons vary. So I think that's something that you have to keep in mind when we see the spring come. We'll see that number increase because, you know, they're at campgrounds and other, other venues. So we, there is a lot of fluctuation, but if you average it out over time, Jim, it's, it's ranged anywhere from 80 to 120.
Thank you. So, I talked about increases in things that concern me. I'm just going to pull your attention to a number that, it's an anomaly that's sticking out. Number of referrals, elementary average. That 73 is a lot, right there. So some of that is where we were for referrals, we had less. This year, we are seeing a huge increase, 97 in the, oops. 97 you'll see in our preschool this year. 66 evaluations already done, or in February. That's a lot of evaluations. 35 identified students of that. Mr. Richards, you said severity. I will tell you, there is a very high autism population in that 35, to a point where, wow. You know, and, and some of that is because of the fact that there was delays in care during COVID. Students weren't getting early intervention. They weren't getting what they needed for those two years. They were home with families, one, two-year-olds. When they turn three, go to the doctor, uh-oh, here we are. We, we need to get some support and help in, and we're experiencing that right now. These newly identified students ineligible, many of them are coming without a typical three-year process of services would happen. Typically, we identify very early, they'd have a couple years of early intervention, then they come into our preschool already with EI involved. Not, they don't have employees, they're struggling themselves, they've gone through a pandemic. These students haven't had a lot of services right now. So it's a concerning area for me, the preschool area right now. Because those students have a lot of needs right now, more than we've seen.
And, and I, this is not my area of expertise, there's many more people on this board. But I think I know that, you know, missing those early years carries through for a very long time.
You are correct, you are correct. And then when you're seeing that same anomaly happening in, in the, in the elementary schools right now, although there's been 73 referrals, only 27 that have been evaluated. So parents are very concerned, and I'm hearing, we talk a lot about this, parents and teachers are concerned. Kids aren't making the growth they hoped they would make. So what do you naturally do? There's been failure, you refer to special ed. Our processes are in place to do that. We should refer because it lets us do file reviews, brings a team together, a lot of good processes happen when you refer a child. However, only 27 of those 73 actually moved forward and actually assessed. Because they said, it's not really a student with a learning need. So we haven't moved forward with those. Out of those 27, which is good, 20 of them were identified. Which says, you're doing the right thing in your referral team, because you've only put 27 kids forward, and only 20 of that 27 were actually identified. So that's pretty good, means you're not overtesting. Yes?
Um, is there a pattern in the age range of these 73 referrals? Are they older kids?
Mostly younger.
They are.
My, my concern right now, and I think that is in the paper, it was in the, I think it's been in the Wall Street Journal, it's been everywhere, in the Times, they've talked about the need for early intervention right now. And, and we're seeing, this is base, the majority of this is
But they missed out.
third grade, third, three-year-old.
Well, that's why I asked if it was a
That's our hardest population we're seeing right now.
Like a little bit higher, because we have all of those kids that had no kindergarten and no first grade.
For a second, third.
So now you've got these second, third, fourth graders that missed out on that as well.
And our fifth graders in reading. I think that, look at, when you miss your formative years from second, third, and fourth grade, it's gonna affect you in, in your ability, in your ability to really maintain and, and move from, you know, move, move from a skill base to actually learning to read independently.
Right.
We're seeing some struggles there.
So the 40-plus referrals that are, that did not take the next steps to evaluation and identification, were they, was there a pattern in what the, was it learning issues, were they behind, was it social emotional, was it?
The, everything, everything.
But not identifiable as a learning?
There's other things too, there's Title I services, a lot of services in place for these students. It's not like we said no, and they, they, they're monitored, they're through the child study teams, they bring them up and look at them again, they're watching them closely. We're doing data teams three times a year on all students, so we're watching and monitoring.
Now, the other, are, are staff members and teachers feeling more comfortable referring? I mean, I know sometimes you can get into that learned sort of like, well, nothing's gonna happen anyway, so referrals often don't get made. Are these coming from like teachers or parents or?
All.
Or is it just a better process?
Some are driven by our data teams. I think some are, we're doing this, some of our data teams saying, looking at the data, we're concerned about growth.
Right.
So let's look closer, and then when we look closer, we say, no, let's continue interventions.
I guess where I'm going with this is, I don't want us to think 73 is, oh no, oh no, oh no. To me, it means people are really paying attention.
Yes.
And saying, hey, you know what I have a concern here, let's take a bigger look, which is a good thing.
Thank you, that was one of my points, thank you. It's a good thing that we're looking at students and doing that. It, it's just alarming that there is, we're seeing a huge increase in the number of kids who have needs.
Well, I think that will.
Yeah.
So, one of the questions I, I have when I see that 73 and all of those actually, those higher numbers, is I know that when, when students are referred, we like to have the school team do the evaluations. But those are also the people that provide the services to students who have already been identified.
Mm-hmm.
At some point, do we need to have a testing team and services team just to get some of these numbers down so that we can identify more quickly?
Yeah, I'd say you've lost a lot of instruction time testing.
School of thought, school of thought there. And, and I've been in a system that had, I've been in both. And I think that one, one system had a, a testing team that went out and did it and stayed consistent with our evaluations. Concord has done a lot of work with formative, formative data. And they've done a lot of work of looking at kids, and as you know, as a former educator here, a lot of work about authentic, authentic assessment, and looking at what kids can do and be able to do. When you have someone that doesn't know the child assessing, sometimes you lose that ability to look at that. So it's, it's, it, it's a toss-up in some ways. So I think a balance of both, and I think that, I think at the elementary level, wouldn't, the amount of assessment too is very different than you would have from a full educational eval, maybe at a higher, like in a high school kid with, with maybe some emotional disturbance and things like that, you're gonna do a lot more. This is a base, a basic first evaluation. You're probably gonna get a cognitive score, you're gonna get an academic score, and, and you're probably gonna look at, you know, depending on what else you're looking at, you're gonna do your hearing and your, and your vision. You do a basic evaluation at first to see where the child is.
That's where I'm wondering if we could reduce some of those numbers just by, for a short term, bringing in some testers, so that our services teams can really focus on providing services to our students that have been identified as needing it. And then, I, I don't know, but I'm just thinking that's something to consider perhaps.
And I'll show some OT numbers later, and you'll see why the request for the OT. I think you're right on, you're on the same page with me, and, and we can, we can do that with that being an increase in contract services. I don't currently have that budgeted to do that.
So John, the, the current thinking then is that, excuse me, we lost some kiddos during these COVID years that we just experienced. Is it safe to say that there's a, that there's a likelihood that the number of referrals will drop once we move this sort of bubble of youngsters through, providing and hoping that we don't run into another situation like we've had?
I think if, one of the things in our strategic plan is to look at universal preschool. And I think that what, what, what I think we're, we needed before COVID, we need now is more early intervention for students, more opportunities for kids to come to school earlier. There's not There's not, I don't know. It's a, it's a good question. I hope so. I can be hopeful that once we're back in, in, in routine for, for students and we do some of this work of, of, you know, routine, routine and solid education and good assessment, that we do get there with our kids. And our next generation coming in has, has a stronger skill base in doing that. But we're facing such a lack of good daycare out there right now and a lack of good systems in place that are helping students pre, pre-coming to school. And issues with after-school programs and everything we're seeing right now, that high poverty rates. I don't know. I don't know if our scope is changing a little bit. And that's what I just know, really more towards early intervention. Thing is where we need to go.
And just one other.
Sure.
Obvious, I don't know where the number of evaluations are for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three in the middle school column. Were there no evaluations after those twenty-four and twenty-seven?
I think it all got smushed.
Oh, look at that.
What's that?
Should be seventeen sixteen.
Seventeen sixteen.
That's my
Oh, I see they got squished over.
My technical advisor here smooshed those ones. That's why, to my left, you know?
Sorry to bring that up.
I had to ask you about that, but oops.
Yeah, thank you.
Answers my question. That's great. Thank you.
Cut and paste, technical difficulty.
Yeah.
Tom, there's a, a pretty significant preschool grant, developmental planning grant that's just been released. And we're looking at it. And we're, we're, we're looking at the criteria. But we know that there's a significant lack of early childhood programs for, for, for those young youngsters. And they're not attending. The, the private schools can't afford it. It's expensive. They can't pay their employees and many of them have shut down. Leaving, you know, a void for, for those young, young kids to be engaged. Whether it's just one day a week or three days a week. It, 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 they, they've lacked the opportunities to be in those kinds of settings. And so we've seen it. Today was a great example. We were at a school looking at their spring, their, I'm sorry, their winter data. I'm jumping the gun here. And it was amazing. I was shocked to see where the kindergarten kids were. I, I, I was shocked. I anticipated that they'd be much further along. And they just, it's just taking longer to get those young, those really young kids back up to speed where they belong.
Does our district still host that program for really young kids and their moms or dads?
Family Center.
Is it Family Time? Is that the name of it?
Family Center, yes. Family Center, yes, we do.
Family Center.
Yeah, we do. We do. Laurie Hart, um, is our, is our, you know, early childhood coordinator. She does family centers. She does home visits. She does amazing work in, in really in the city.
Because that seemed to really produce some great results as well.
And I think that's why we know the scope of the problem so well. Because of the work that Laurie and her team does. She's out there in the community and doing this work with families. We actually just, we were asked to present, we presented for the Principals Association about the work that Laurie does last week. Laurie and I presented. So it was, it's really something that is very positive about that, that work. That we get out and get to families when kids are young and try to help and support them. The high school, another, just to bring it up, you're seeing really, that's mental health. And the need for students with mental health. That number of those tw, of those thirty-four, I would tell you, the majority of them really are for kids that are just experiencing some difficult regulation times right now in where they are. And again, you'll see though, only seven when we go through that assessment and have Dr. Marjorie Baraska at the, at the high school who does a very thorough job. We only really have seven students who are, who are identifiable at the end of this process. So it's
Can I jump in again?
But with, with that, we, we get a lot of supports along the way. We have connections with Riverbend. We have connections with some other agencies that are helping us with those students.
There's a large grant, Systems of Care Grant that's been released. And we're working with Riverbend in collaboration with Riverbend to write the grant. And that will provide actual clinicians in our building. They, they work for Riverbend, but they will have, they will be providing services in our building. So they're working out all the details now and putting the grant together for submission. But I, we have our fingers crossed because they'd really like to partner with us on this, so. Yeah. And one of the nice things that just happened is Chief Osgood asked if the principal of the high school could be on their Board of Directors for the first time. They'll have an educator. So Dr. Herbert's going to be on their board starting in the fall. And I think that will be another great segue and for the, our voice to be heard at Riverbend. So good things.
The other piece to think about here, it's easy to look at, okay, we had this big number of referrals. But oh, thank goodness, only seven are eligible for services, which means that's going to save us money. Well, no, the, the twenty-eight people don't disappear. So for people not super familiar with special ed, if you're eligible for a special ed diagnosis, New Hampshire does it by what's wrong with you or what's inhibiting your ability to learn. Some states do it by how much time do you need help to succeed in the classroom. Massachusetts does it that way. So here's two ways of looking at students. Do you have an identifiable issue? Yes or no? Which if yes, then you have, we have a legal obligation to that student. Or do you need two hours a day of extra help to make it? And lots of those kids aren't, don't meet the, the identification. So grants like you were talking about or, or systems and programs in our schools become all that much more important. Because just because I don't, just because I don't meet the, the list of qualifications doesn't mean I'm doing okay in school. So this is where we can
Right. And Kim touched upon this the other night too. It's, we talk about universal design for learning. And it's when every kid gets what they need. And that's really what we have to really look at. How do we universally design our systems so all kids' needs are being met? And that's the future.
To follow up on Ms. Hastings' question, I have to go back. I know school psychologists have been pretty strapped and stretched thin the past couple of years. So I guess what jobs are not able to happen right now? Because people are in this reoccurring cycle of referrals and screenings and evaluations? Because I know some work definitely can't be done then. So is our infrastructure not appropriate or?
Big question. And I think that, you know, to that granular of, I think it ebb and flows. I think that there are certainly times when we have a lot of referrals on the plate and we're in the times clicking and we got to go. But then there's other times when maybe not so much. When you look at the preschool, they're on a roll right now. When you have that many, they're going all the time. So yeah, are they, they, having to balance between services and doing that? And yeah, I think they are in doing that. So yeah, do I have it currently budgeted? No. Did I ask for it? No. Because I'm, I'm kind of hoping that this wave does subside a little bit in doing this once we identify some kids and we move forward in doing that. If not, I'll be back asking for more. I'm watching these trends and as you see, I'm tracking them consistently to hopefully make those decisions. I'm looking at what we currently need now. You know, are the workloads hard? Yeah. Is there a lot of assessments happening? Yes, there is. Do I feel it's manageable from the staff we have currently? I think so. You know, I'm saying that, I think so. I'm, I'm not them on a given day. I'm looking at them and observing numbers. Concord is, we just did a whole special review. And one of the things that we did have pretty well was a good psych, school psychology's, psychologist in every building. That's, that's rare around our state. And it came out when we did our review to say that we are really well-equipped there in, in doing that. So we felt that those services were good. So based on that data that we just collected last year, we haven't shifted and changed that much because our number hasn't changed. So we're still there.
John, is this similar to what other school districts are seeing?
Oh, yeah.
If so, is the state doing anything from their Department of Education to assist us?
Not that I'm aware of.
I just thought I'd ask. Thank you, John.
All right. So here's my need. This is the first need I'll get to. We talked about preschool. This is a projection for if you were to approve my, the preschool teacher for Abbott Downing School, it would bring universal preschool to Abbott Downing School, which would give it, which would put it in three of the four elementary schools that could have preschool would have it. It would put preschool on this side of the river, which we don't have in one of our buildings right now. And it would allow us to meet the needs of this growing number. So as you see, the layout we currently have at BMS, and you want to click down one more slide just so they can see the whole picture. And in MBS, it's all there. Our grand total of one hundred and fifty-seven students we look at. Grand total of eighty-four identified students looking at projected for, this is what we know as of right now, next year. That's not a projected number. Eighty-four, we know we'll have next year in our preschool.
And what are our total allotted slots?
You're out there. So we have to be creative. And, and we do things like today we speak, speech group, or we do a play group for kids as we, one day we play group. We go out to the local providers and provide speech services or OT services out in the local providers. We contract five, five slots over at Woodside right now. We used to have others, Eastman School and a couple of others. But they don't have capacity to be able to support us right now. They don't have the employees. They've limited the number of kids that are coming in. Yeah. Yeah, they're suffering right now. So we can't even buy slots in their places. That's how much they're, they're suffering right now. So this is where we are, even with the addition of Abbott Downing.
So we'll lose the revenue of non-identified students that used to come to preschool?
Right. But we'll, for Crimson Tide, yes. The Crimson Tide preschool will be no more.
Although our, our normal preschool that was at Conant School and used to have
We still, we still tuition those in. So you see, we're still
But special ed kids didn't need tuition.
No. But the, the tuition kids in, so it's
Oh, you still have space by them?
Yes.
So some kids pay tuition if you're not identified. But if you are identified, you don't pay?
Correct.
Correct.
So the more if we, if we, but we're obligated to provide services to those identified kids. So if we don't have room
Three and four-year-olds, we have to, we have to, we have to do services. So this is our proposal. This would replace the Crimson Tide preschool that's run through the CRTC right now. It would be more of an integrated preschool and
Would they still use it as their
And they'll still use it as, they'll still use a demo site. They'll still do, they'll still do as a, a demo site for their, for their, for their educational students. And our hope is the students go district-wide to all of our preschools. That's our hope and from the CRTC. And I've been working with Ann Fowler a lot to talk about this. We've met several times and, and tried to look at what the best solution for this is.
I see that we're still using Woodside.
Yes.
Would it be more financial sense to bring those students in-house rather than contracting out and
If I had the room, yes.
But if we're adding room and we're having tuition, tuition students, I guess is, is it about the classroom mix? Would, why wouldn't we bring those students back into the district?
Sometimes I don't know if I have capacity not to keep those slots right now.
Okay.
And budget them. Because I'm nervous because this is, this is if you give me a teacher. If you say no, then I have to, then I still have to keep that in place.
Five slots and another place is twenty-five students.
Yeah, but we're twelve tuition students. That's why I'm asking.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Could we get a breakdown of sort of the revenue versus expenditures for the proposed programs altogether? So what are we bringing from tuition?
What are we bringing from tuition?
What are we spending on it?
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand.
Woodside costs twenty-five.
Well, and that, so
The teacher's a hundred and twelve.
So
We'll put it all together, but it's going to be very
Yeah.
And I guess if we fund, if we fund, I didn't think we made money. I'm just trying to understand that. If we fund the program, would you give up the slots at Woodside? And bring that revenue back and cut that light out of it?
I could. But then the thing about special ed, what happens when I go over the number? I'm going to be calling Woodside, you know, mid-year, next year and talking to you. I, I'm just trying to project what's happening.
That's what I was getting at. It provides an extra number of slots for kids.
Yeah.
And how many families are going to be losing childcare if we close down the Crimson Tide program?
Well, hopefully they can, the four-year-olds, still, the ones that are three now will still come to our program this fall next year.
They'd just go to Abbott Downing rather than?
No, they stay at Abbott. They just tuition in as one of the tuition students. We'll offer them the opportunity to tuition it. Won't be as many, as many days. That's the only thing. They'll lose a day or two.
But the Crimson Tide, like it's full-time, right?
No, it's only till, it's only till noon.
They just cut that two years ago.
Yeah.
So it would be maybe not the, not soon over days, but it would be more of a, not a full-day program.
Right. Right. Yeah, we would offer them definitely right away. And that's why we kind of wanted to do this now to make sure that we're, we're, we're putting it out there. See if we can do it, we have time to tell those families if they have to find something else for care. And again, it's only the three-year-olds that are in the program, which is only now about six kids.
So John, technical thing, Beaver Meadow is on this side of the river too.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, just a little, little detail with regards to that.
This part of town, how about that?
Southern.
You know?
Southern, this side of the river.
And then, then if this, if this can happen in this budget, at some point, we look at our preschool grant. We might be looking at, you know, Kristen McCollum's down the road very shortly. If we, if we get some grant money, more grant money in.
We'll put them on the roof?
Yeah. State House, any? Let's let our buildings
Right. Friends, let's work on that.
We have a reduction in staff. So I have a classroom. So if you'd like to consider it for next year, I'd certainly be open to that.
And, and we don't need to discuss this right now, but we can always revisit the configuration of the middle school, six to eight and five to eight.
Oh, God.
All right, all right, I see you.
I'm willing to have that conversation.
That is a different night conversation. And then, John, you just said, at some point, you used the term universal preschool, but this isn't universal preschool because not everybody in our
Eventually.
For those people, for those people listening and watching at home, this is not universal preschool the next year or two.
Nope. Sorry about that.
Tried to slip that in, John, didn't you?
I will add though, that the return on investment for early intervention on a, on a public level is exponential.
Yep.
So I'll throw that in there.
So occupational therapy. I think I had a couple of questions around caseloads and assessments and everything else. This is what we currently look like right now. This is this year. And those are our seven people. Those are the caseloads. You see some fluctuation in numbers a little bit, but that has to do sometimes with level of severity and balance of load of, of caseloads. But we meet monthly. We meet once a year. We have a big meeting and talk about distribution of what happens. Based on these numbers, two years ago, we put a position into ESSER to kind of bring these down out of the clouds. They were in the seventies in some points, very high. And we had all these assessments. And on top of this workload, there was a lot of that. So we've been funding it through ESSER for two years. And this year, I'm requesting that, that occupational therapy goes into the budget when we maintain these caseloads.
Can I ask, so, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't really So this represents occupational therapist one, occupational therapist two. Why does the seventh person have a significantly larger workload or caseload? I mean, maybe OT two has, has larger, but seventy-two cases? How is that distributed amongst these folks in, in an equitable way? Are these all full-time?
Yes. Yeah, some of them are just one-offs. Like they might get one, one a week or one every two weeks, things like that. So although the numbers don't tell the story of number of, number of service hours. So we go deeper than this to look at, this is caseload. These are kids are managing, kids in the caseload.[1735.01] But some of them are, a lot of that last column with OT seven, a lot of that is just that they are building the building, doing a lot of one-time therapies with kids.
So it's not, they don't manage all their paperwork and all that, they just jump in and provide a service.
Right.
Whereas the, the person at Abbott Downing might also be involved in the, the special ed team in that building.
Yep, yep.
So should, it's like a, like a.
A balance.
Schools, yeah.
Okay. And how many of these OTs are funded by ESSER right now? Just one.
And my memory from our first presentation is if we can't bill Medicaid for these services if it's federally funded.
Correct.
And so is part of the $300,000 projected increase in Medicaid revenue from, from this, moving this position?
Well, it's part of it, yes, yes. Also, the other part of that would be, we've, Laura Anderson, our healthcare coordinator, who is able to meet with Medicaid teams, set everyone up, sign off on the orders, do it all correctly from the get-go. So between the two of them, it is, is making a huge difference in what we're projecting to do.
OTs will play a huge role in our young autism population.
Yes.
That, they're a huge piece of that early intervention.
Yes. So I could ask for two, but I'm asking for one. That's what these numbers show.
What would be a normal or inadequate caseload?
You're about there, you're about there, 60/50, it's typically for an OT. You know, it's not, it's not unreasonable, we're, we're about there, these, the 40s are really where you want to be. I, I'm not, I think they're okay, because when I meet with them, I know they're busy, it's more of the, a lot of assessments, as you said. So, you know, we can talk about that down the road too of.
Hopefully 72 isn't OT, OT seven isn't doing too many evaluations.
No, that's not, that's more of just a.
Checking.
Yep, checking in, you know, that's why you see that, those are lighter, those are, every, every service is important, but those are services that are more maintenance of some kids and helping kids progress and, 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 and. Sometimes they're, sometimes they're, they're, you know, a, a group, a group meeting with like the OT, they'll sometimes co-treat, some of those are co-treatments, things like that, with, with the speech path and the PT. Some of our multi-disabled students, they'll do a co-treatment. Now, we talked about this too, Mr. Richards, you brought up the severity of need. So this is something that, that I think Jack has said, I never saw this before, and I think we've had this conversation. Pre-COVID and after COVID, we start, we have been starting to see a lot more kids come to school with more medical needs than we've seen. Seizure disorders, feeding tubes, a lot of diabetics, more diabetics than I think I've ever seen across, across the board.
Like juvenile diabetes?
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and you add into juvenile diabetes, you add in sometimes a language barrier, you add in some other mental health disabilities and other things. It becomes a situation where requiring our building RN to handle that and what we have just gone through with the amount of sickness and COVID and everything else we're going through, wasn't manageable. So we had to add some supports. Our goal is to move away from where we have the extra RNs. I think that with bringing in Laura Anderson, who is a nurse practitioner by trade, she can oversee LPNs and LNA's and, and directly service with them. So we can move to a little bit of a, based on what the need are of students, some le, some lesser-degreed person to perform the same service with her oversight. And that's how the medical world works, they have these hierarchies to things.
Gone are the days of the school secretary.
Right.
Being the nurse, when the nurse wasn't in the building.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and I think it's because of the severity of needs of what we're seeing, so this is again, it's, it's, we want to be inclusive, we want kids to come to school, we want to help them. But we also have a, have a safe environment, and the law requires us to do that, so this is the balance. And, and the nice thing, again, I'll, I'll refer back to our healthcare coordinator, Laura Anderson, again, she's, used to own a practice in town, she worked with first-time Americans. She understands, understands, she knows the scope of the local doctors in the area. When we get permission from families, she can speak directly to doctors about students' needs. We're more accurate than we've been with her position in place, and this is, this is year one of where we are. We're hoping to move, like I said, towards more LNA and, and LPN support as the next year rolls around.
Maybe I'm not understanding something, but Beaver Meadow and the high school have nobody?
They don't have extra supports more than their, their regular nurse in the building.
Okay.
They don't have the need for the students at this point. And the high school has two nurses, so they're able to do some of these things.
So does that vary year to year?
Depends where the kid goes, yeah, yeah, some of these kids will end up in, next year, next year actually, there will be a change in that. So again, contracted services, why do we contract out? Physical therapies, additional providers are contracted for specialized disabilities. Clinical psychologist services, sometimes I need neuropsychological evaluations done, mental health or things like that have to do it. Outside assessments, sometimes parents ask for an outside assessment and they have a right to it, we can do that. William White services and attorney fees, hopefully not too much. This is again, Bill White Services, this stays consistent next year, I'm not projecting any changes in this. He provides things from autism, autism spectrum disorder, emotional behavior supports. And then you'll see, he does building-wide things with behavior specialists and all, behavior supports in all of our learning lodges and our, and our support rooms across the district. So grand old total of $908,220.
He services children in all buildings, yes?
All buildings. All buildings. At some point, again, we'll, this went out to bid a few years ago, we'll put this back out to bid. I'll tell you from doing this 10 years in another district, this is a pretty good price point at the bottom of that. And some of one of the other, other agencies that you work with that provide BCBA services and all these things.
So Jack, without, I'm sorry, without naming names, can you, when this went out to bid, there's a figure that is out there that the next highest, the next bidder came in.
Double that. Double that.
So for people who are at home, listening or watching, it's important to know, because this has been a contentious item over the years.
One of the first things I did when I came here was do, was to go out to bid for this, and Bob, you were on that committee, you and Gina. And we interviewed, I think, four or five different outside agencies. And we were blown away by the costs associated with this services, doing the same thing as, as Bill White's business, so. The other thing with Bill is he's been around forever, I know it doesn't always, that isn't always necessarily a good thing, but as the needs of children have morphed and, you know, we're looking at a very different student population than we did 20 years ago. He's grown with it, especially in our district, I mean, when I taught at Walker, in the nineties, we used Bill White's services for our three autistic children, our children with autism. So the other piece with that, I remember on this committee was just looking at these amazing, amazing new companies providing services, but the history with our own district and just the, the smoothness with which the services are given is also a huge. We get good bang for our buck, and it's a big buck, I get it, but it's not perfect, but it's, you know, we could pay a lot more for a lot less.
But I think we ought to look at it again, though, at some point.
Yeah, always, oh, absolutely.
Go back out and say, you know what, what changes and what's changing in our population that we may have to look for, you, you know, what's our balance, you know, where are our numbers of kids and, and what are the supports that we need to bring in? And does that change? And when we're doing grants and partnerships with Riverbend and things like that, do we have to shift our, our type of service? And those are questions we're going to have to ask ourselves and look at down the road. But for now, I, I meet, I, I meet with Bill and his lead BCBA monthly, and we talk about kids and programs and shift where we have to shift, but it's all within that number right now.
You said the number was the same as this, this year?
It hasn't, yeah.
I, I guess going back to our discussion on autism needs and growing demand, should we be, is there more we should be doing with that population to help them grow better later? And save us some money later as well, but, you know, are we doing everything we need to do to help get them to a place where they can learn successfully?
As I'm projecting right now, I think we're here, because I'm going to have some movement within that, and I think that, you know, we, there's, there's different pots in that contract, but the bottom line stays there. So I, I have some, some, Bill and I are talking about a lot of options within that, and if, and, and if, so I may also, at some point, if I needed to adjust and move, I would, I would also look at some of my grant money too, and what's out there for grant money and things like that that we could do. Because it's not, it's not sure planting, it's supplementing something we're putting up $900,000 for. So some of those things, I do often throughout the year, have a move-in, have a kid that changes, have a move-out, I have to have that flexibility. And right now, in February, that looks like I don't see a huge change in that, or I would have brought it forward at this point. Good, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
What do you do with all your free time?
Look at the data. Ellen, did you want to talk at all about?
Yeah, my slide didn't, I added that slide in, but you used a different link, so.
Sorry.
Um, would you like to see the, just the current allocations for student services all in one?
Just to give you some money?
I, I can't, I, I, I can't predict, yeah, I can't predict what next year will be, but it could be really helpful just to see it all laid out in one.
Can you go, can you post?
I think so.
We just came off the other.
Last time I had issues.
Not like him.
I see you dashed the word.
There you go. This always reminds me of Netflix loading.
All right, so. Just a little bit bigger for you. Oh, come on. Oh, it just, it went through the whole one, all right. What, what slide, what slide it was?
Eleven. I remembered that.
Well, fun fact, Ellen's brother and I were in a lot of the same classes at Concord High, Daniel.
Oh, yeah, fun fact, I was Ellen's health teacher.
Ellen's brother works in the district now, too.
That was a fun quarter, just ask.
Now he's working at Warkham Grove.
Yes, oh, you missed it.
It's like delayed, there we go.
All right.
Yeah, the Desmond family is very happily, very engaged with the Congress School District. Four out of five of us have worked for the district, so that's pretty good. Um, yeah, so. It's fine, transcribed, that's, I don't know why it's doing that, but it's good. Closed captioning, yeah.
We better be careful.
So the, I put the FY22 numbers up there because with the exception of Title I funding, that money carries through the first quarter of FY24. So it's just important to get a, a sense of it because we're not comparing fiscal year to fiscal year. The entitlement funds, again, with the exception of Title I, as well as IDEA, are 27-month funds. So we receive their, we can expend them for 27 months. We get it in July, and then we have through two Septembers after that to expend. So as you can see, some of, some of that money will be carrying over, so there is overlap between grant years. And that's why for the first quarter, I feel like I'm running around with my chicken, with my head cut off, because we're, we have all of these grants open because of that overlap. So I think the big thing to note is the funds that expire in, in 2024, the, all of those ARP, you can see those four, ARP IDEA, ARP preschool, ARP homeless, there are two ARP homeless ARMs. And those are going to start to expire, as well as, as you know, our ESSER, also known as ESSER III. We do have funding coming in for McKinney-Vento, this, this year is the first of three years. That money is appropriated through the McKinney-Vento Homeless Act. And because of our, our increase in homeless numbers, we've been awarded a small amount of money over the next three years. So we can anticipate that around $56,000 as well. I, my, my best guess for FY24 funding, you know, appropriations or allocations, I think things will stay pretty level-funded. Our free and reduced numbers, we're getting back to kind of the norm, and that, as you know, kind of dictates the, the Title I funding. So we have been pushing schools to push families to fill out those forms. The Department of Education is also now using the June end-of-year count, which is to our benefit. A, it's a more accurate number, but it also allows us to count those students who become eligible for free and reduced lunch throughout the year. Versus what they used to do is an October 1st one-time count. So I, I think that will help us, so there's still time. If you can urge the families in your constituencies to, to fill those out, even if they don't think they qualify, you never know, they may, and certainly those numbers help. Title III, our funding has gone down, but that's because our ELL population has, has gone down over the past year. And we've had a lot of kids graduate from needing ELL services at, you know, level three and level four, so that's a positive thing.
And which is hard, because they don't qualify for services anymore, so our numbers go down, but there's still students that are learning our culture, learning our needs, assimilating into our district, and we lose less money to help them. It, it's really, it's really hard, that, that number.
Yeah, the formula is, yeah, not, you're not, you're not looking at need necessarily, you're looking at standardized test scores. And that's where the, the dollar figure comes from, unfortunately. But we can use Title I services for those student needs as well, so that's the, the breeding and the blending that we do. You know, are for students who are experiencing any kind of need at a, at a school-wide school. I anticipate our IDEA, and definitely our IDEA preschool, if we do have more identified preschoolers, then that allocation will go up as well. And I think about, I think I spoke about everything else.
Thank you.
We should know, hopefully by April, I can come back to you and tell you what our entitlements are set to look like, even if it's preliminary data, that's, that's the aim. It could be as late as, if it was like this year, it could be as, as late as August.
And we're very, Ellen and I work very well together to spend every dime of that.
We appreciate that. Free and reduced lunch, where are, do, I mean, it's very.
Forms are online.
They're online, I know that.
Absolutely.
How are we doing this year versus three years ago, I guess is the only way you could compare it.
Yeah.
Do you, and kind of thinking as, you know, what's your feeling, I know it's very difficult to quantify this and to measure that, but are we, are we getting those forms, those applications in? Are we getting that message out?
Yeah, what, what Donna Reynolds, our, our director of food services, food nutrition services, has shared is, I, I think we're in pretty good shape. Of course, there may, if there have been changes in the family, you know, the household makeup or job changes and things like that, I would urge families to still, just to fill out the paperwork. I understand that it is, may feel a little invasive to reveal income information and things like that, but it really does, you know, constitute dollar, dollar figures, but.
Their information's not out there where other people or neighbors would ever see, it's, it is confidential, and it makes a huge difference with regards to money that we bring into the school district to help their kids in school.
Absolutely.
Not just the lunch program.
Correct.
It has impact all across programs.
The, the tagline for free and reduce is it's more than a meal, because it really is, it's, provides tutoring services for students. So it's a, it's a unfortunate proxy, but it's the proxy that the federal government uses, so we want to make the most of it.
I mean, specifically in New Hampshire, because we don't know people's incomes, so the only way that we can gauge people experiencing poverty is if they apply for this, if they self-report. Which means we're going to lose folks anyway, especially as kiddos get older. So anybody that's listening, you can reach out to our legislators, there's a bill that would link free and reduced lunch to qualifying for Medicaid. So that would eliminate the need for families to fill out, and would be easier to catch kids, you know, because it's a lot of agency time, extra paperwork is work. So that would be a real improvement in the way that we capture kiddos who need those services.
And just having to report that, one, one and done, all those services lumped into.
So much easier for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack, here's a moment to tell people to bother.
Absolutely.
So, I'll bring that up real quick. So while Ellen was speaking, I did take that slide and transferred it into your presentation, so there it is, cleaned up. And we'll post that, okay? And then I'll put that right before the work session schedule. Remember, this has been revised, the, this Wednesday is an open session, which we can have a discussion about. The sixth will be a short on technology, to at least give you an idea of what's in the budget for the purposes of posting a budget. And as we said, if there's more you want to know about technology, we would do that on the 13th, that open session. On the eighth, we will talk about transportation, food service, we will talk about where the free and reduced are, where the meal counts are, and how the program is, is, is running. So that is the upcoming sessions. The information, budget, bottom left on the website, these presentations, if this one's not there, it will be in the morning, and if it is there, it's going to get corrected anyway, because now that you've seen it, this is it. And then we put the minutes, the presentation, the videos as we get them, we post them out there, and these are your new besties, right here, as it relates to your budget and your dollars, so. Okay?
Very good. Mr. Dunn, are you finished?
I am done for the moment.
And Mr. Fabrizia, you're finished? We have a non-public session this evening, is there any business before we go into non-public session relative to the budget presentation we saw today?
Well, just, we need to discuss what, the open session for Wednesday?
Yeah, sure.
Let's discuss it now, then.
Are we gonna have, do you think you'll have answers to some of the questions we asked? Is that?
We figured we'd start with that. We'll revisit the curriculum presentation, bring that back rebooted, and then answer whatever questions we can, and what we don't, we'll have a list of stuff that we're still working on. Does that sound all right?
That sounds great. Does anybody have any specific questions other than what we've already asked to have them work on for Wednesday?
For Monday, is 30 minutes enough time for technology?
Or it's a start?
It's a start.
Okay.
And we'll do the next session, too. But if you have any questions that you review the budget, which is in our packets and our folders right now. If you have any questions specific for Wednesday, please just email those to either Superintendent Murphy or the business administrator, Mr. Dunn?
One other thing I will ask you, we posted, well, we haven't posted yet, we have it on here, it's 5:30, would you rather technology be at 5:00? But I know that may be a little difficult for some folks.
Would you want, just that half-hour session? Starting at 5:00 as opposed to 5:30 on, on Wednesday, on this Wednesday? No, the following.
Sext following the break.
Monday, right? Yes.
That's the Monday. Which is the, prior to our regular board meeting.
I'm in favor of keeping it to a half hour. I don't know.
We'll do a crash course in technology and resume.
No, we have another session.
You're fine.
So. So we do want to be thorough on technology, but if we need to spread it over two sessions, we will.
Yeah, it's not as big of a draw as it was last year, as you know, that was a big, big ticket item.
Well, that's always good news, thank you for that.
I have also posted the preliminary line-by-line, so people can, this is posted out there. You can go and you can click on the little corner, and it will send a budget, it'll open up your email and send an FY24 budget question, sends it to all of us, so anybody that clicks the little question in the corner, it will do that. They can also, Tom, since you're at it, say, let's get the new guy, which is really not the new guy, but, you know, there you go, it'll all be open, FY24 budget question, and all they got to do is shoot away. So they can email any of you, and it has all the line-by-lines, so you can see all the line-by-line, nitty-gritty, and we'll be adding more to it as we work through the process, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Dunn, it's not.
It's also in your Google folder.
Not quite as good as the year where you had sort of the magic calculator.
Yeah, I call that the Happy Meal year.
Yeah, that was great. You worked, you had a lot of free time to do your programming.
You could just pick, and if the tax, everything just dynamically changed, and I, I kind of felt like, give me a number two, and a number nine, and a number seven. I thought, what a fast food this thing.
Dashboard years.
Yeah, dashboard, yes.
Dashboard years.
I had that internally, but.
I don't think anyone was on the board yet, we had the, my first term on the board was a binder.
Oh, I remember.
Big giant three-ring binder, I actually still have, have like 2011 in my living room, it's a huge gigantic binder.
You use it as a table.
And then you'd open up pages, would come out like this, and you'd need like a microscope.
Do we need two?
No.
I think only you. The trees, the trees in New Hampshire appreciate the fact that we don't do that anymore.
They came down on a dolly.
Would someone?
I'll make a motion to move into non-public subject to RSA 91A colon three, matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself, unless such person requests an open meeting, this exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of a fee, fine, or other levy if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Weinberg, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Walsh. This will be a roll call vote whenever you are ready, Mr. Stacey.
All right. Ms. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Cotten?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Siggetts?
Aye.
Mr. Richards?
Aye.
Mr. Weinberg?
Aye.
Ms. Walsh?
Aye.
Ms. Baker?
Aye.
So we will go into non-public session, after that, we will stop transmitting at this point, because after that, I anticipate that the only thing that will happen will be adjourned, there'll be no further business done. So with that, we are now in non-public session, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.